How are you?
I'm good.
Somebody's praying. Can we open up and see y'all praying?
When he can do it, he can do that. Oh, dang. Good.
On his time of honor?
Thanks.
How did you come on here? Don't you know that's by him? Okay. You know that's right.
I didn't say this. I'm saying it's small.
All right, it's two minutes after ten o'clock on twenty-fourth May. So I'm gonna ask Brother Philip here to open us up with a prayer.
This is Father, we call upon your precious name this morning. What's another beautiful day? Father God, we thank you for this court, everyone here in the sound of my voice. We pray, oh Lord, that you be with us and that we will make decisions that would be pleasing to your sight and most certainly to benefit our citizens. Father God, we just pray that everything's done decently and in honor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, it's all in meeting order. We have a quorum. I'd like to thank all you guests for coming. Public hearing, do we have anybody that don't speak today? It's bowing that one, so we don't close the public hearing. We're gonna deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number one is introduction of the new TDM County Liaison Officer for Newton County to Commissioners Court. And John, if you would, I'm gonna let you.
If there's good spots you'd like for me to stay in?
Wherever you want to stay.
So, good morning, Commissioners, Judge, and audience. Thank you for having us here today. I'm John Klingman. I am the District Coordinator of Attic Loveken. For the region, we serve an eleven county area which includes Newton County. Back in April of 2022, a little over a year ago, Chief implemented a new program called the County Liaison Officer Program. And that program, if you will, is very similar to the agri-life extension agents in each county across the state of Texas with the exception of one in that slumming county, just due to a very small population, that's still one hundred people. So in that process, they typically selected counties with some various metrics that provided additional assistance, both commonly to the rural jurisdictions across the state of Texas. In short, what if there's no FEMA? Right? Don't leave here today saying John said FEMA's going away. What John is saying is assistance from FEMA becomes more and more challenging each year and with each disaster that we face. Sometimes we don't meet the. It's the local jurisdiction's ability, but it does not meet the federal threshold. So sometimes, and more times than not, the state is responsible for supporting our local jurisdiction. And in this program, there is now in Newton County as of May, the something, first week of May, we have a County Liaison Officer assigned to Newton County. We got him here from Mississippi just as quick as we could so we can get him indoctrinated as a Texan. I think most of you either. Maybe I understand it. But Jordan Harshorn is the County Liaison Officer here in Newton County. He lives here, that's part of the requirement is to live here. From what I understand, he's leading the race and becoming ingrained in the community, which we're extremely excited to hear. And of course, we can't leave out Ranger, his service dog. So we're glad to have both of them on our team and proud to introduce him to you all. He is here to support the local emergency management plan, provide some technical support on the. Of course, if there is a response here locally where an emergency operations center has to be open, Jordan will serve as that liaison officer in the EOC, back to myself and/or the state operations center to ensure that we support you all in meeting any unmet needs that arise. We certainly recognize the challenges that smaller jurisdictions face. I'm pretty confident in saying this, you guys don't stand alone just with volunteer. In the Dead Cock Region, we have over one hundred volunteer fire departments. Three of them are paid. So ninety-seven percent of the fire departments in the Dead Cock Region are all volunteers. All. There's no paid people that are there every day to respond. So that's just one challenge that we can face and that we have to become creative in learning who our partners are next door, who our partners are to the south, to the north, and how do we follow them? And that is something that Jordan will be instrumental in. I know you all welcome Jordan. People are asking a little bit, I think, when he's in front of the other CLOs, just so y'all know, you're getting a little bit of a riot there. That's your warm welcome. So thank you for welcoming Jordan. And we look forward to a long-term partnership with Jordan and Newton County in helping you all better serve your residents. Thank you. Any questions? I'll be glad to take any questions. If anybody has any questions? Thinking about it. Now, okay.
He will be here, Bill.
He'll be, yes. So this is a, so this is a position that we plan to keep occupied as long as walks the straight and narrow. We'll keep him here. I know his grandma says she could come, she might wind him coming. So he's here for the long haul. We don't, this is not something that'll be here for one year, gone, come back, so on and so forth. It is a long-term, full-time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. We're gonna move item number eleven to item number two. And, you know, for y'all, I took and put item number eleven, item number fifteen. They're basically the same, so I wanted to see who all was reading the agenda, so I kind of put them on there like that. Item number eleven is discussing of appropriate, approve amendment number one to the Professional Service Agreement, Task Order Number One between Newton County and Wood O'Brien LLC for debris monitoring and consulting for the HMGP. Two sixty-six buyout. Basically, we have their contract. We just re-signed the contract last week, you know, an extension. But on these final homes that we're demoing, that we have to approve, and that's another item, approved to add another twenty thousand dollars to their contract for them to complete the debris monitoring on these final homes we got to demo. Motion made by Commissioner Pombi?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, motion's passed. Do we need to go ahead and sign that? To get it, get it going?
Did we go ahead and end them with the law also? Yes. Get it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do number twelve. Hey, which one? Okay. All right, item number twelve is discuss and if appropriate, transfer monies from the contingency fund zero one zero dash four oh nine dash three nine six to support a budget amendment for the purpose to demo the properties that remain standing from the forty-two sixty-six buyout program. And basically, we have the twenty thousand dollars, plus we're gonna have whatever the debris costs. And it looks like we're gonna have some asbestos removal. Asbestos side, asbestos side. So we're moving the money from the contingency fund to this to go ahead and paper the debris haul off and the asbestos. So we're looking at approximately a hundred thousand dollars total.
What you mean? I'm making the motion.
Yes, go. Motion's made by Commissioner White. Second. Second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right. Then we're gonna move back to item number two. Discussing of appropriate, approve proclamation declaring May twenty-second through twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three flood awareness week. So that's just, you know, I'm sure Newton County is pretty. Where, this is just official flood awareness week? So I need a motion to proclaim May the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth is flood awareness week. I make it. Motion made by Commissioner Pombi? Second by Commissioner White and Benson.
Oh, White.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right. Item number three, discussing of appropriate, approve. Those Texas statewide opioid settlement agreements. And this court is not here, so John, did you have that one?
I plead, I haven't read the resolution, but what this is, the continuation, I plead to kind of charge received money in the first part of the settlement from the opioid list resolution. And what this does is authorize the county to actually apply for the second level in the settlement program. So it'll be a set up basis, it may continue, it may not, depending on when the money's run out, but. We've got monies initially, this is allowing us to file applications and ask for them. I haven't read the resolutions, but.
I think counted a lot of minutes, a little over nineteen thousand this time. So that's. That's what this one's about. And I guess I need, we need a motion, a motion to approve.
I'd like it.
Motion's made by Commissioner Benson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
All of. Again, number four is discuss and if appropriate, approve the purchase of a Kubota excavator from the buy board up to approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand by precinct four. This agenda item is an amendment to light item that was approved on March twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Powell?
So the court approved the, actually approved a budget amendment for eighty-five thousand to move from a cash fund into an equipment purchase fund. Because the equipment we have is basically at its life end, we don't want to do a lot of work on it. A budget amendment. We will add the additional funds to the eighty-five thousand that were originally done, but the machine that we originally requested is not available. A comparable machine from another cat is more than this amount. And in talking with some of the crew, we've got a really dated front-end loader. Purchase of this eighty horsepower track hoe would give us the ability to load dump truck as well. So we can do a lot more with this machine and it gives us. But it's not a request for a budget amendment, it's a request to spend that amount of money to purchase it. I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Pombi? Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, item number five, discussing of appropriate, approve the sale of a two thousand and five Ford truck. I'm not gonna read the VIN number, but it's.
Commissioner? It's this old Ford truck been sitting at the Boeing for about two years, have, you know, a lot. Get it run and put a hot battery on it, but boats and everything, not worth fixing.
I make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Powell? Second by Commissioner Pombi, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, and item number six, discussing of appropriate, approve sale of old precinct one tax office building to be moved outside. That's Commissioner Benson.
Oh, y'all know we bought that double wide last year and got everybody housed. They're getting it out of the way, more parking, make it look like a round phone.
We're not using it for anything?
No, sir.
All the electricity and everything has been disconnected?
Disconnected.
Oh, it's ready to go if it's so.
Yeah. Better put it in the boat, what, two weeks?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Pombi? Second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All, okay, all again. Item seven is discussing of appropriate, authorized to advertise request for proposals for disaster recovery services or debris removal services. All right, and this is, last year we signed a contract debris removal and with DRC. So that was their last contract extension, so we have to go out for proposals for a debris removal company, so this is. And now the court can go out for proposals.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Pombi?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, item number eight, we're gonna have to table it. We're supposed to get the twenty twenty-one audit, but the auditor, he didn't show up and Sherry's not here today, so we're gonna table this one until they bring us the audit. Supposedly. This is for the twenty twenty-one year end audit. So I need a motion to table this?
I'd like it.
Motion's made by Commissioner Benson?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, item number nine is discuss and if appropriate, designate representative for Newton County to serve on the Deep East Texas Rural Transportation Planning Organization Board. Newton, they're asking, Judge Weeks was a county representative on the board. He's no longer with us, so they're, they're looking for another representative for Newton County and we need to point one. You know.
I can do it, y'all.
I make that motion that Judge Ronnie Cochran be the board member for the state.
Okay, motion's made by Commissioner White? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, and this, item number ten, and we're rolling right along, did they? Discussing of appropriate, approve donation of nineteen ninety cargo five-ton high water truck to the Newton Volunteer Fire Department. And this is Commissioner Benson, so it's a truck y'all have it, precinct one?
Yes, but we're going to, it's supposed to be Newton County DMS number one.
Okay, DMS.
Number Newton County.
Okay, so I thought Dewville said they had one?
Those.
Okay.
Yeah, two, two.
Okay.
Teasing got on, but Dewville.
Okay, so instead of Newton Volunteer Fire Department, it was Dewville.
Number one, we Dewville.
Yeah. Emergency Services District number one or?
ESD one.
Yeah, ESD one.
So they, they need it more than I do. Rio got it, you know, we never, yeah, put new batteries on it.
Twenty-five ton military, like a general Deuce and hey.
It crank, we drove it around last week.
I hope we don't use it for nothing but parades. I'll make the motion.
All right, motion's made by. It's gonna be ESD number one?
I second.
All right, motion's made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Pombi, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right.
That's ESD one Dewville Volunteer Fire Department, in case that ESD one's not. It's one, okay.
She was just saying it given to District or the actual fire department. District isn't part of it. It's two separate things, that's what she's trying to make.
Yeah, you're right, it's so, it's a.
So all the minutes, I'm just, that's probably where, that's where she's coming from.
And you get that, so that's a good point. So I don't know how that works, does the ESD own the fire trucks or do the, does the Dewville Volunteer Fire Department own the fire trucks?
The Dewville Volunteer Fire Department purchases.
Okay, then we want, go ahead and do it. But it goes to the fire, it goes to the fire.
Let's see, it matters, they get no funds, so it goes strictly to the fire department.
Every settlement, something the way they hire, we just, uh, we, and the board is only controlled that, not from the fire department. It kind of loses the benefit, so I would say that ESD won't.
I was trying, I think that's what Ray was coming by.
Okay, we got item number thirteen, discussing of appropriate, approve.
Did we vote?
Oh, did we vote?
Yep, I thought we voted.
Yeah, we voted. Did?
Yes.
I mean, B would call them, though.
It was. It was, Commissioner Powell made the motion. You second, so we all, everybody voted. All right, item number thirteen, I'm gonna read this and then in pursuit of the authority granted under Texas government codes regarding pending or contended, complicated litigation, we're gonna go in executive session on this one, but item number thirteen is discuss and if appropriate, approve monies from the contingency to support the costs associated with the removal demo of sewer lift stations on the remaining properties in the HMGP VR forty-two sixty-six buyout programs as well as cap any remaining. And we're gonna go in the executive session and discuss this.
You wanna do them other two, in case somebody wants to go?
Well, we can. Well, my, what do the, we'll save this one for last?
Yeah.
And do the payment of bills and then we'll go into that. So we're gonna move this one, item number thirteen, to the last. All right, item number fourteen, as discussing of appropriate, approve paying approximately a thousand dollars for an asbestos survey on a. Two fifty-six, this is the first step in completely demo this home from the buyout program.
I make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Pombi?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay, so we, fifteen's covered. Item number sixteen, we're gonna table this because the auditor and the treasurer are not here today, but it's discussing of appropriate, consider changing out our budgets. So I'm gonna say, we're gonna table this motion or tape it.
I like the motion table.
All right, motion's made by Commissioner Benson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, and number seventeen, we got payment of bills. Good morning.
Your special precinct two, nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents. Issue your special precinct three, sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Issue your special precinct four, twenty thousand, seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Record preservation, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Fungus waste of fuzzles, ten thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Go to register. Newton County Library, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents. Historical operating, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Courthouse emergency grants, three thousand, one hundred and five dollars and eighty-eight cents. FEMA funds, forty-seven thousand, two hundred and two dollars and sixty-five cents. Technology fund is two hundred and ninety dollars and twelve cents, with a total of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-five cents. Have any questions?
Motion, pay the bills.
All right, motion to pay the bills been made by Commissioner White? Second, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Can I put your light bill?
Thank you. Just sound enough feeling.
All right.
Hey, now, y'all, I just thought this thing need to get all the way.
Yes, sir.
They build that with a trailer, bro.
Yeah.
Damn that building from a while back.
I thought it did.
They been in the church.
Oh, man. Good, right.
Partly signed it as a.
Yes. Yes, go ahead. Oh, yeah.
I was like, this was the update.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And we have item number 13, discussing of appropriate approved monies from contingency to support the costs associated with the removal slash demo of sewer lift station that remains on properties in the HMGP VR 4266 buyout program as well as cap any remaining water wells. I need a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Okay.
Motion made by Commissioner Farmby, second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Aye.
All in... Right, motion paid. So, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make...
Motion made by Commissioner Benson, second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is... meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ron.